Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us this evening to hear the public hearing of Wednesday, April 5th, 2022. Before we start, I would like to acknowledge my council colleagues and staff from the mayor's office. To my right, I have Councilman Nick LeBron. To my left, I have Majority Leader Clark, our mayor, Luke Roman, followed by Councilwoman Julie Sturgeon, Councilwoman Bichdom, Councilwoman Tiana Herdley, and Councilman John Gale. Thank you for being here with us this evening, member of the public, department heads, and local officials. This is our kickoff to the budget process, and we will be hearing a presentation from Mayor Gory regarding his recommendation on fiscal year 2024. This is the start of a process in which we, as the city council, will be going through a series of department budget hearings to review the mayor's recommended budget, as it is our duty to review and advise on the needs of the residents of the city of Hartford. And without further ado, I would like to welcome Mayor Luke Roman to give his remarks and presentation. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President Rosado, and thank you to all of the members of the city council, to treasurer, and, of course, to our city team, and most importantly, to the residents of Hartford, whether you're here tonight at Weaver or whether you were watching at home. Appreciate the chance to present this proposed budget for fiscal year 24. This is my eighth and final budget proposal as mayor, and I look forward to working with you, hearing from the community tonight and at the next public hearing and throughout this process, and then working with colleagues on the city council as we work to adopt a budget for the next year, which begins on July 1st this summer. Council President, I don't know if somebody has the quicker to advance the slides. I can just grab it. So first, I just want to start broadly and talk about some of the broader goals for our budget. And I want to start where we often do, just looking back to where we've been over the past few years, and now the past eight years, recognizing that not all that long ago, our city was facing a massive fiscal crisis, an enormous budget hole that just got bigger the more years you looked out. The city was insolvent. We were bankrupt. And so we worked very hard together as a team, but also with our partners at the state, with our unions, with some of our large companies, and with our community, to make some very difficult decisions and build partnerships that would allow us to get on a sounder path. And our hope at the time was that we would be able to build a sustainable budget that would allow us to avoid the shocks and the severe cuts that we had to experience. And over the last few years, we have worked hard to maintain and sustain that stability. Last year, we were able to reduce the property tax rate for the first time in a number of years, by the largest amount in about 30 years. But we said at the time, we recognize that doesn't mean that every taxpayer got relief. That as we have a system that's dependent on the property tax, there are two things that go into the taxes you pay. One is what is the property tax rate, and the other is what is the value of the property? And we saw some big changes in the values of properties. Some properties went way up in value during the pandemic, some went way down, and that provided some real complications to us. What we wanted to do was deliver as much relief as we could by lowering that property tax rate, the mill rate, last year. And so this year, the first important goal was to make sure that we could protect and preserve that reduction in the tax rate. It was a 7.2% drop in the property tax rate last year, and we preserve it here. The budget also goes a little bit farther in trying to deliver relief by expanding the senior property tax credit by another $250. So it is now $1,000 property tax credit. Just a few years ago, it was at $500, so we've doubled it over the last three years because we want to provide some additional relief to our seniors who are working to stay in their homes. As I said before, we also want to protect our fiscal strength and sustainability that we worked so hard to achieve. And of course, we want to fulfill our main mission, which is delivering the core services that our community deserves, and deliver those services as well as we can, as effectively as we can, and as efficiently as we can. We also want to look for opportunities to improve and enhance those services where we can. Six, seven years ago, as I said before, eight years ago, we had to make some very, very deep cuts. And we said at the time that we're not just cutting into fat, we're cutting into muscle and bone. We knew that the cuts we were making would affect our ability to deliver services to our community. And we didn't have a choice at that time. But over the last number of years, we've worked carefully, cautiously, to try to heal from those. And that means increasing staffing where we can, responsibly do it, where we think that it will make a significant difference in our ability to deliver services. In this budget, we tried to do that for them, to make sure that we were looking for ways that we continue to enhance services and staffing in a responsible and sustainable way. And then lastly, but in some ways, it was one of the first principles, to make sure that as we propose a budget, that we're doing it honestly. And what I mean by that is that we are basing our budget on accurate projections of how much money we think is going to come in and how much we think things will actually cost. Some of my colleagues around the table remember that when we came in, we inherited a budget that included a lot of assumptions that just weren't real, whether it was about how much revenue was going to come in or how much expenses were going to be. So we've tried really hard, and I'm grateful to the hard work of our budget team, to really dig into those numbers, to test them, to probe, to push and ask a lot of questions, and make sure that when we say we think we can estimate that we're going to get a certain amount in tax revenue, that we really will, or that we think that we're going to be on the hook for a certain amount of cost, whether it's healthcare expenses, whether it's overtime expenses, whether it's the cost of delivering any of the basic services in our four departments, that we're basing that on a real careful analysis of the trends that we've seen. And our team has done that really well, and again, I'm grateful for it. But I think that's an important principle to highlight as well. So those were some of the basic principles as we approached this budget. This recommended budget that I put forward for council consideration, as I said, does maintain the property tax rate at the reduced rate that we passed last year of 68.95 mils and expands the elderly tax relief credit by $250. It, as I said, makes targeted investments to increase the capacity of departments to meet city needs. It also funds the contractual obligations that we have taken on through negotiations with some of our unions as we work to make sure that we're keeping ourselves competitive in this really tough and tight labor market, that we have agreed to a number of contracts that have raised wages in some place cases across the board, in some cases, looking at specific jobs where we know we have to pay more to stay competitive, and this budget incorporates the costs of those agreements. Those agreements have already been agreed upon, they've already been voted upon, they're in force, but they increase costs, and we need to make sure this budget reflects them, and it does. We maintain the current level of funding, city funding, for the Hartford Public Schools. I want to stress that for a number of reasons, enrollment in our schools has continued to go down year over year. In large part, that is the intended and predictive result of the Shep versus O'Neill settlement. As more slots are opened up in magnet schools, as more open choice slots are opened up, there are more students who choose those options, which means we have fewer students in our Hartford Public Schools. That doesn't mean that that makes it easier for our Hartford Public Schools, presents some very tough choices and challenges, because it's hard to predict sometimes how many students you're going to have in any one school, where that movement is going to occur. It does mean, though, that year over year over year over year, the per pupil expenditures have gone up. And so while the spending is flat, the amount per student that we are contributing to the Hartford Public Schools and the Hartford Public Schools is spending has gone up consistently, and by a significant amount, it's up about 25% since 2019. I also want to stress that a number of us here are working hand in hand with legislators at the state to advocate for additional funding through the education cost sharing formula at the state. And while we won't know until the budget is adopted, I think that we have as good a chance as we've had in a long time to make some meaningful changes to the state's education funding formula, which will help provide additional resources to our districts and to the districts in cities like ours. So we're going to continue to advocate, and I have a strong hope and some confidence that we'll be able to help in partnership with our legislators make those changes this This budget does not include any borrowing, and it doesn't rely on any one-time revenues. I want to stress this point for a second. Since 2016, we have not taken on a single dollar of debt. We partner with the state as part of our work to build a strong foundation, and in that partnership, the state assumes the payments of the long-term obligations, the debts that have been taken on before my administration began, before this team came in. But since 2016, we have not taken on a single dollar of debt, and in this budget, we continue that practice. We build a capital improvement plan that uses every source of funds we can. That includes grant funds, state and federal, that includes reserves that we built up through the careful use of surplus dollars, and includes contributions from the general fund. And I think it's important that we try, for as long as we can, to continue that practice of funding our capital needs with operating dollars so that we don't get in the kind of hole that we were in eight years ago. Now I'm going to jump and talk a little bit more detail about some of the places where we've made targeted increases in our budget. First, we've added public health and safety staff, in particular, building on prior increases in the staffing for our housing inspection team. We add three additional housing inspectors in this budget, which takes our housing inspection team under the development services department to 16 housing inspectors. And we also add four inspectors in the fire marshals' office. As you know, the housing inspectors and fire marshals and the fire marshals inspectors often work hand in hand in doing that inspection work, and so we're growing the capacity of both of those teams to do that work. This is part of a broader commitment that our council has been strongly advocating, that I strongly agree with and support, which is to make sure that we are doing more to ensure that our residents are living in housing that is worthy of them, where landlords are held to account. And so we want to make sure that we continue to expand our capacity in that housing inspection team, both in development services and on the fire side. We also add additional staff, both dispatchers and the supervisor, in our 911 dispatch center, that's our ESMT or Emergency Services and Technology Center. And that's important because we get an awful lot of calls, and we want to make sure that we have a team that is adequately staffed to respond to those calls. We've done a lot of work to fill spots that have been vacant, we've built those up, but we think it's appropriate and responsible to add more. The most significant increase in staffing is in our Department of Public Works. And our Department of Public Works is, in many ways, the front line of quality of life work in our city, everything from helping pick up the trash and recycling, to keeping our streets clean, to keeping our parks well-maintained, and keeping our facilities in good condition. The Public Works Department also bore the brunt of some of the toughest cuts eight years ago. And so we have increased staffing a number of times in recent years. In this budget, we would add 15 new staff for light remediation, parks, facilities, engineering, forestry, street services, and waste and recycling. I'm really grateful for the work that the Department of Public Works does, and I think it's appropriate that we add these additional positions there to give them greater capacity. One of the other very significant expansions in this budget is for our rec center. We increase funding for our Department of Family, Children, Youth, and Recreation by about 38%, which will allow our rec centers to be open more hours and to provide more programming. Our families deserve that, our kids deserve that. And the same thing is true at our libraries. We increase funding in this budget so that our library branches can be open more hours as well. As we've gone through the experience of having our main library branch closed because of the flood this year, more and more families are using our branch libraries. Those are incredible oases and resources in our community, and they should be open more. So this budget helps to do that. There are a handful of other positions that are increased, five additional positions in a number of different departments, but those that I just walked through are the largest increases proposed in this budget. I'm not just going to walk through some of the main components of the budget as a whole so that you get a sense of the big items in our budget, both on the revenue side, where the money comes from, and on the expenditure side, what we spend it on. And first, I'll just start with the top line. The budget that we proposed for this year is $619 million. That includes our contribution to the Hartford Public Schools, which is by far the largest piece of that budget, at $284 million, as well as all of the city side municipal services. That's a $19 million increase over last year, which is a 3.27% increase over last year. It's appropriate that we increase that budget and that we make targeted additional investments and that we fully fund our contractual obligations that we've negotiated. So it's natural that that budget goes up, but I want to stress that we've worked hard to keep that increase as low as we can so that we don't put more burden on our taxpayers. And in a time like this, a period of inflation, I think that represents a very careful and responsible overall increase. I mentioned a number of the increases before, but as you see on the last slide here, another thing that we have targeted in this budget for increases, continuing to spend a little bit more on our equipment and technology replacements to make sure that we're not letting our equipment wear out, that we're making those smarter investments upfront so that we're not being penny wise and pound foolish. We're also continuing to make wise and careful expenditures for our IT systems, including cybersecurity. And we felt what it feels like to have a cybersecurity breach back in 2020. And we're determined to do everything we can to make sure that our systems are resilient and strong, and this budget reflects that as well. This slide is an overview of our revenue sources. Of course, the largest source of revenue overall is from property taxes. This budget projects a 2% increase in the amount of revenue that we'll get, the amount of money that will come in from property taxes. But again, I want to stress, the property tax rate, which we cut last year, does not change. Our grand list has grown, the amount of property, the value of property has gone up, and we expect about a 2% increase in revenue from property taxes next year. Licenses and permits, which is a much smaller share of overall revenue, but still important, we project to grow by about 7.8%, and that's a reflection of the development and investment that we're seeing throughout the city. Interest and rental income is an area where we project a pretty big increase over last year's budget. And the reason for that is because of what's happened with interest rates. As a city, we've got some large bank accounts. We have our revenue that we hold as we wait to spend it. That revenue earns more, that money, those assets earn more when the interest rates are higher. And so we have earned more this year than we projected in this budget, and we expect that next year will be the same. There's a scheduled increase in pilot payments from the state that's incorporated into this budget, and the remaining sources are all fairly small. But again, we're looking at a revenue growth overall of about 3.3% in this budget, and I want to stress again, that is without raising property taxes. On the expense side, the overall increase matches the increase in revenue because our budget's balanced, so that too is a 3.3% overall. The largest increase is driven by payroll and specifically by those contractual agreements that we've already reached, by the programmatic enhancements, meaning those new targeted investments that I talked about in different departments, and to make sure that we are able to stay competitive in the labor market. It also includes an increase in the contribution to our capital improvement plan. As I said before, we are not borrowing, but we do have to make sure that we're investing enough to maintain our assets and to make investments where we should responsibly do that, to make sure that we're not letting things deteriorate. I'll talk a little bit more about what we prioritize in our capital improvement plan, but this does include an increase there. And as I said, it also includes the increase in replacement parts and plans for vehicles and equipment and technology. There is a more detailed expense summary on this next slide. I won't walk through every line, but this slide that is available on our website will be available on our website, and so feel free to take your time and go through it. I do want to emphasize a couple of areas of larger increase. As I mentioned before, I misstated the number a little bit before. Children, Families, Youth, and Recreation, I think I said, is a 38%, it's a 36.5% increase in this budget. Metro Hartford Innovation Systems, which is our IT and technology, including cybersecurity, increases 15%. There is an increase in our city clerk's office to ensure that they're able to deliver services that our residents use often. I talked about the staffing increase at ESMT or our 911 dispatch center, that translates into an 18% increase there. An 11% increase in Public Works, which is because of those positions that we added that I mentioned before, and a 12% increase in what is titled year debt service. But I want to stress what that really includes is our capital investment using the revenues that we take in this year. That increase has not had to do with debt, it has to do with capital investment that we are making. The 7.2% increase in the police budget is driven almost entirely by the payroll changes that are contractually obligated from our last collective bargaining agreement. And I could, I will leave the rest of the lines for others to walk through. As I said, this will be up on the website. The next slide just shows the biggest categories of expenditure in a different form, just a way of seeing where our money goes. As I said before, the largest single item of expenditure is education, $284 million coming from or coming through the city to the Board of Education. But I also want to stress that the Board of Education also has other sources of funding, and so while the budget that comes from and through city is $284 million, the adopted budget that was adopted by Hartford Public Schools is $429 million for this year. The next largest category of expenditure is our payroll. It's what we pay in salaries and overtime to our team, whether it's fire, police, public works, our health department, our Department of Family, Children, Youth, and Recreation, across the board. After that, the largest categories are our contribution into the pension plan and our payments for benefits and insurance. The debt service line that is in this chart is about $4.9 million. What that reflects are our annual payments on the debt that was taken on to build the baseball park when we achieved that partnership with the state of Connecticut, where the state assumed the payments on our general obligation debt. That did not include the money that had been borrowed before we got here to build Duncan Park, and so that debt service remains in the budget. The library and other capital investments, Metro Hartford Innovation Services are each under $10 million, but still significant expenditure categories. Utilities is a pretty large one, at about 5% of our total budget, and then another 6% to a variety of expenditures. So again, largest by far, education, then payroll, and then pension and benefits, and everything else after that. This next slide shows you the same picture, but just focusing on the non-education city categories of expenditure. I won't walk through all of those because I think I covered them before, but again, this gives you a sense of how those big categories break down. I also wanted to give a picture of what's included in that benefit and insurance line because it's a big number. And I think it's easy to understand what we are talking about when we talk about the pension contributions, which are about $50 million that we contribute every year to the pension plan. I think everybody understands that, but benefit and insurance is a little less clear. $36 million or 72% of that is going into health insurance, our health insurance for our employees. Another $5 million or so, or 11% of that, is for liability, property liability, and other types of insurance to protect the city. And then another $8.5 million or 17% of that is workers' compensation and other benefits. Just to hit a few broader points, some of which I mentioned before, we're going to continue this policy of not taking on new debt. We are also continuing this budget to fund our annual contribution to the pension plan. It's really important that we, as a city, have a strong history of funding our annual contributions to the pension plan. The actuarially determined employer contribution, or the ADEC, is how much we have to pay each year into our pension plan, and I want to say, that is independently determined. We don't make that number up. There is an independent pension commission that works with actuaries that gives us the number that we then fully fund. I also want to note, although I think most people know this, we have not used and do not use our American Rescue Plan dollars to close holes in our budget. Our American Rescue Plan investments have been guided by the priorities that we agreed on jointly together. We continue to make those investments, but those investments are to do more than what's in our city budget. They're to help our community recover and heal and accelerate that recovery in other Finally, this budget sticks to the plan that we laid out when we built our long-term sustainability plan, both because it's our commitment to do it and because we want to continue to see our ratings get upgraded. And so it's important that we stay disciplined, as this budget does. When we look to the long term, and what we have to do to make sure that we can maintain the stability that we fought so hard for, and that we can sustain our budget, that we can sustain the services that our community deserves, and not face either tax increases or the type of cuts that we faced eight years ago, there are a number of things that we have to continue to do. First, we have to aggressively attract investment and growth. I talked about that 2% increase in how much we think we're even getting from property taxes. Part of that is because we have been working to attract growth and investment and build confidence and grow the values of the properties that are here. We have to continue that, and we have to be aggressive about it. We have to stay disciplined in our spending. We have to stay disciplined in our spending as we have. And of course, we've got to work to improve quality of life for our residents in every neighborhood. That's why things like expanding hours at our rec centers matters and why things like expanding the capacity of our public works team to take care of our parks and our streets matters. Because if we're going to have a strong and growing city, then we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to make quality of life better in all our neighborhoods. We have to, I hope we will continue to fund our capital improvements without borrowing. We have to protect the stability of our large commercial tax base. Those big buildings in downtown, they feel distant to a lot of our community. But the truth is they pay a lot of the bills. That's a big part of our tax base. And they face a real threat right now because commercial property values are going down. People are working from home. Companies are shrinking their offices. Some companies are canceling their leases. There's a lot of vacant office space. That's not just true here in Hartford. That's true everywhere. But it does mean that we also face a real risk to our stability in the years ahead because of that hit to those commercial office buildings, which are a big part of our tax base. We can't change the tide of work from home and remote work. We'll be out there recruiting companies and recruiting others to come in and rent that office space. But one of the most important things we can do is try to replace the energy and the activity and the economic activity that comes from folks in offices by continuing to focus on building residential density in downtown core so that we remain an active, vibrant place that can attract and retain the employers that sustain those big buildings that are such a big part of our tax base. And as I said before, we have to continue to execute our American Rescue Plan priorities. And we've been able with those resources to make important investments in community safety, violence prevention, and grants to nearly 100 organizations that support our young people in so many different ways. And grants to our small businesses to help them withstand the effects of COVID and then expand and grow. And in economic and community development as well. Finally, I'm just going to highlight at a, at a real high level, our capital improvement plan. This budget and our CIP for the next year includes or anticipates about $42 million of expenditure on capital improvements. As I said before, that comes from a number of different sources. Some of that, about $12 million of that is built into this year's budget in general fund money going to new capital investment. It also includes the use of reserves that we built over time for projects that we prioritize. And it also includes some use of anticipated surplus at the end of this fiscal year. What we've done year after year after year is as we've managed carefully and built up a surplus at the end of the year, we've reinvested that in capital, in physical assets that will pay off for our city down the road. We expect to do that same thing this year. The priorities in our capital improvement plan have been pretty consistent. The number one priority is school construction. We're sitting today in Weaver High School, which is a beautiful high school. And just down the road, we have MLK, which is another magnificent and beautiful school. Historic building that was dutifully preserved. But we have a number of school projects underway and a number of projects that we are in the middle of pursuing and some that we have planned. That's been our number one priority when it comes to investing in capital assets because we want to make sure that the school buildings that our students study in are buildings that are worthy of them, that they can go to every day and feel inspired by the setting in which they learn. We still have work to do, but that's been the prior, top priority of our capital improvement plan. And I want to stress there that when I talk about our schools, I'm talking about almost, almost entirely, I'm talking about our neighborhood schools. We've also included funds for traffic, continued traffic safety improvements, continued investment in our flood control plan and drainage. Citywide ADA improvements, American Disabilities Act improvements to sidewalks and buildings to improve accessibility and safety. Neighborhood improvements as well as tree planting and parks and investments in public health and public safety. That concludes the presentation of my proposed budget for FY fiscal year '24. But again, I want to first say thank you to the team that helped put this budget together. Our budget team, our finance team, our teams in all of our departments, which work hard to make sure that they are identifying needs, that they're carefully looking at what they've spent, what they need to spend, and then we go through it in detail together. The budget that we put forward is a product of months of work to identify areas where we think we can and need to do more, identify what risks we face and do our best to balance the needs that we have. And that includes delivering our core services, making new investments in our community where we can, and at the same time, making sure that we're protecting the progress that we've made and keeping our city stable and protecting our taxpayers. So with that, I am grateful for the chance to walk through this proposal and look forward to public comment. Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bronin, for your remarks on presentation. And now, without further ado, we're going to move on to my favorite part of this hearing, which is to listen to our residents through the public hearing segment. But before that, I want to read some housekeeping rules. Public hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the following procedure. Each person wishing to address this committee therefore upon recognition by the presiding officer give his or her name, address. And if he or she represents a group, shall in addition state for the record the name and address of said group or organization and shall limit his or her remarks to five minutes. And our councilman Gale will be keeping track of the time. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual member. Any person making personal, impertinent or slanderous remarks or will become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forwarded there by the presiding officer from further audience at said meeting unless permission is remain, is, unless permission to remain is granted by a two-thirds vote of the council members present. During public comment, there shall be no debate by the council, though questions may be asked by councilperson making such comments. For members of the community, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Hartford Public Access Television and can be viewed via the Hartford Public Access TV Facebook page, Comcast, Xfinity Channel 96, harperpublicaccessTV.org or Channel 6032 for Frontier Cast customers. Spanish interpretation is provided with a partnership with the City of Hartford and the Hartford Public Library. Additional accommodations can be made available with enough office to the office of the council president. And now I will be calling the individuals that signed up for public hearing. Once I say your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And the first person that signed up is Jack Hale.
Thank you. My name's Jack Hale. I live at 25 Carmel Street in Hartford. I am Chair of the City's Street Advisory Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Council President Rosado, Vice-Councilman Mayor Bronin. I want to first recognize the fact that you've done exceptional work. There are plenty of cities where trees don't get the attention that they get here. And many of the programs and projects that we've done are, are worthy of note. And, and we hope to continue in that way going forward. To provide a little bit of background, last year, 2022, working with Knox, the city planted 566 trees. And another, probably another 100 were planted by others as part of development projects and streetscape improvements and such. The, at the same time, we removed 646 trees. So we're, from some points of view, we're, we're sort of staying even. But in fact, the trees that we removed are big old trees and the trees that we plant are small, young trees. So we're slipping backwards. That said, it's important to keep, keep at it. Those trees eventually will grow and start to provide the services that the bigger, older trees are, but that's going to take a while. We, in our, in our canopy action plan that was adopted by the commission, our goal is to have a 35% tree canopy cover in the city. We're currently at about 25% and we give everybody 50 years to get that done. But we have to keep at it. Trees are infrastructure, just like streets and parks and, and so forth. And they need, they need continual attention. This year, I want to say we're, we're doing all right, or we will be doing all right. The budget that's presented will get us through. But it's, it's not really enough. The reason it gets us through is because we have some money left over from this year that will help with the planting and, and servicing that needs to be done. The addition of a, of a new staff person in forestry is really important. What we found over the years is that the project, process of taking care of our trees has become more complicated and more labor intensive all the time. In particular, because the easy planting locations in the city are running out. We're getting some work done. And the, the going forward, it becomes more complicated. We're going to add more staff for that purpose. And in, in particular, we're facing a lot more problems, whether it's insects or long periods of hot, dry weather that are really affecting our, our urban forests. So staying on top of that is really key. To add a new staff person there is really going to make a difference. And planting will be able to maintain our current rate of planting with the funding that is available plus what has been proposed in this budget. I want to mention a couple of other things. One is, and I know I saw in the, in the budget presentation, that bringing staff people's compensation rates up to, up to competitive levels is important. It needs to be done in forestry in particular. We have an open position. It's been open for months and we can't get anybody to apply for it. The folks who are in the, in this business just can't afford to take the cuts in salary that they'd have to do in order to take, take on the work here. So that's a process that's going to have to go forward. We have to be able to get the best people in here. I see my time's running out. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for supporting forestry in the city.
Thank you. Next to speak is Haya Cynthiaany.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I'm Haya Cynthiaany. I live in the south end of Hartford. Chair of Maple Avenue Revitalization Group and a member of town committee. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Luke, for doing such a phenomenal job. Okay? You, you've done a great job. I mean, not everyone is always going to be pleased, but I'm just letting you know you've done a great job by keeping us on that diet, that financial diet. And the good thing that you haven't had to raise taxes. That's really important. So thank you all, councilmember, working together to make that happen. I really, really appreciate that. Yes, and as we talk about competitiveness, yeah, it's really great that, you know, we talk about, especially in the Board of Education, and I see where the budget for the Board of Education is what it is. And understandably, yes, the kids are leaving. However, we're left with a lot of needy kids in our system and we still need to support those kids. And we still need to support our teachers. Because as we know all, our teachers have become everything to those children. And they need to be compensated much better than what we're doing in our school system. So that's one of the things that we seriously need to address. As teachers, they have a hard time addressing, you know, our kids. And the other thing I'd like to just say, thank you for support in the fire department, the police department, the public works department. However, I'm looking at development service where desperately they need help there financially to get some people that can work to do the work outside in the street, making sure that we are collecting our taxes and we are collecting all these fees and all those kinds of things. We need to make sure that's happening. We are really low on those staff. So we need to really seriously, but again, it goes back to competitive. Now, you know, people don't want to leave their high-paid jobs and come into a job that's going to be paying less. So we need to look at that. And I understand that we have to stay on this diet that we have, but we have to figure out how we can get around making sure we have competent people that are working in our system and make sure they're paying right. Okay? Senior Center, thanks a lot for helping with human service budget. Thanks a lot. I look at the seniors that we are working with and I can say there's so much improvement and happiness with them. So I'm thankful for council and the mayor for addressing that budget to make sure that we can still, you know, all seniors can still have a good time at the center. So it's really important for enforcement in all our boardments that we have on our book and we need people. Housing inspectors and those who hire more housing inspectors. But I think we do need a lot because we have a lot of issues with housing in our city. You know, tenants and landlords are not keeping up with what's going on and making sure, you know, everyone is doing well in their homes. So that's important for us to make sure we are addressing really on that. So let's see what else. Development service. Thanks for the library, you know, support of the library too. And yeah, so some of those are the things I just want to say. Thanks for helping us, keeping us in track, Luke. Okay? Appreciate you very much. And beyond all our residents, okay? And again, taxes, that's really, you know, important for our seniors not to be taxed out of their homes. We want to keep them in their homes. Thanks a lot. Okay?
Thank you. Next to speak is Bridget Prince.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bronin, councilmembers for allowing me to speak. Welcome back. Council President Rosado, it's good to see you. My name is Bridget Prince. I'm living East Hartford. Well, well, sometimes. I'm here representing North End of Hartford specifically. And I wanted to talk about an item that I know is not specifically spelled out in the budget, but I saw the figure earlier, and it's the payment to the MDC, the millions of dollars of payment to the MDC. I don't know what the payment consists of and what it's for because if we sit there and we look at what is not happening in the North End of Hartford, that's, it's probably more of a question than a statement, like what is that, is that payment for? What does it do? What does the residents of Hartford get back for the payments that the City of Hartford makes to the MDC? It is my understanding that the residents pay for water service. They pay for sewer service. So what does the City of Hartford's residents get in return for the payment that's made to MDC? So that's a good segue to my next question to the city council and to the mayor. In the Hartford Current, two days ago, there was a In the Hartford Current, just two days ago, there was an article that said City of Hartford approved Futsal Court, which I understand is similar to soccer courts over there on Franklin Avenue. It was a deal that went, that went forward consisting of an MDC and it stemmed from some back-and-forth arrangements or litigation that would happen dating back to 2017. So my position here is if you can get together and decide that it's important to have sewer service and have a relationship and a deal with the MDC, to have a Futsal Court, a soccer field, a baseball stadium, when you get to the point to where you think residents who are taxpayers and who are ratepayers who live in the predominantly north end of Hartford, when does that become a priority to you? And that's, that's basically it. That's my comment. So I like, hopefully, you'll think about it because it gets to the point to where you can't, or you shouldn't, or I'm hoping that you don't continue to prioritize those kind of venues as opposed to dealing with the real issues that affect not only the quality of life, but the health of the residents that are being ignored by the City of Hartford and by the MDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Giselle Jacobs.
Let's see here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come out this evening and speak on behalf of the community. As some of you all know, I wear several hats in the community. One, as the founder of Children of Color Organization, grassroots organization we founded in 2008 for children in the community who have a parent incarcerated. The other is as those parents begin to return home. God put it on my spirit to, to start a construction commercial cleaning company, Sister Soulja Environmental Services, so, you know, we're able to offer, you know, opportunities to the individuals who are returning home to their parents. The other hat that I have worn in the past, as you know, Mr. Luke was as a candidate for mayor. And my reason for running back then was because of my disappointment in our leaders of our community not stepping up to the challenge. Those of us, there were those of us in our community who were concerned about the fact that we did not know who you were. You know, all we knew was that you was the rich white boy from Greenwich that came to run for mayor in Hartford. We had a problem with that. So, and I recently been asked to run again, to, not that I planned on it, but I intend to put my best foot forward because there are, I for one, am a lifelong resident in the North End of Hartford, and word has it, especially at the LOB, is that our leaders in our community are afraid to speak up for us in certain situations. One of which I'd like to mention, the North End Sewer Miss. It's lousy politics, not racism. This is an article from the Connecticut Examiner. I live in the North End of Hartford. I currently experience the flooded in my basement. By the grace of God, I have not had to scoop out 75 gallons of poop, which the sewage, as one of our neighbors have had to do in Blue Hills area. I'm not going to read the whole article for lack of time, but it says that even the City of Hartford itself, you guys, while going to bring a bankruptcy a few years ago, chose against fixing the North End sewers and instead decided to build a minor league baseball stadium downtown. This prompted a sneaking maneuver by the Democratic State Administration of Governor Daniel P. Malloy, word on the street that him and your daddy are real tight, to have state government assume the entirety of Hartford's 500 million bonded debt while doing nothing about the heavy indebtedness of Connecticut's other troubled cities, a gesture of spectacular patriotism to the city. So that's one issue I'm going to bring up. The other is, you mentioned our classrooms, our schools, the enrollment declining. I have grandchildren who attend high school in the City of Hartford. They have friends. My son, Isaiah, actually graduated Weaver High, High Honors in 2010, then went on to UConn and received his masters. He has two degrees. He currently works with the youth in our community. He chose to return to the North End of Hartford to continue working with our youth, right? He's now married, so I have a three-year-old grandson who lives not too far from me, near Kenny Park, and his wife is pregnant again. So yes, I'm concerned about the sewage issue and the obvious lack of concern as it relates to our leaders, our current leadership, right? I'm concerned about that. I'm a part of public school systems, right? You mentioned that some of our declining enrollment is as a result of the chef versus oatmeal. That may be some of it, but let the kids tell it, it's because of suspensions, expulsions, having substitute teachers where there should be certified teachers from the beginning of the school year, right? So yes, that would be a concern of mine, especially as it relates to the prison, to school-to-prison pipeline, right? You mentioned our seniors and wanting to keep our seniors in their homes. Word on the street has it that seniors have lost their homes, right? Seniors have lost their homes, and some of those seniors' homes have been given to the Hartford Land Bank where they are allowed to fix them up with our community members and then hire an agent, real estate agent. I've become one of those too within the last couple of years because we saw the epidemic of homelessness coming into our communities.
Ma'am, your, ma'am, your time is up.
I thank you for giving me the time to speak, but I could have said a whole lot more, but thank you, and God bless you both.
Next to speak is Marcus Jarvis.
I didn't put my name down.
I'm sorry?
I didn't put my name down.
Oh, be proud of mine, Dave.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I didn't put my glasses on.
I, I understand. And I believe our last person that signed up to speak, and let me see if I can pronounce her name, Cindy DeBurgala?
DeBuke Gala.
DeBuke Gala, I apologize.
I recognize my partnership is not always the best. My name is Cindy DeBuke Gala. I live at 188 Whitney Street in Hartford, proud resident of the West End. I've lived there for now eight years, and I had the pleasure of renting the home that I lived in for six years and then purchasing it from the landlord, which was a really interesting experience. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for hosting this meeting tonight and for giving us an opportunity to speak. I admittedly have not read all 300-some-odd pages of the budget and am not as well-versed on it as you are, and so I have mostly questions, more so than comments, that I like to put on the record and then I'll perhaps follow up with the email to see if I could get some answers to them. So I did a keyword search in the budget for homelessness because I was curious. I know that we have an extensive problem, and I know that Journey Home and other organizations in the Hartford Cam are doing excellent work to address houselessness in our community. And the only times when I saw it up, come up, was when discussing blight and the removing of homelessness encampments. I don't recall what page that was on, but my question is, was supported any, is there in the budget for the Hartford Coordinated Access Network to address houselessness and provide services for those who are experiencing homelessness in our community? And will any of those funds go to the shelters or the nonprofits or the coordinated entry system itself to help that population? I know that the coordinated access networks and the coordinated entry is at risk of dissolving, and CCH is working to get $50 million at the state level to keep that system alive. How are we going to keep it alive in Hartford? So that's my first question. I want to thank the woman who brought up the MDC issue. I know that Representative Gale and I live in the same neighborhood because I've seen him out walking his dog, and we've chatted a few times. They're paving, they're doing something in the West End. I don't even know what it is, but the repaving of the road is abysmal. I have a 2008 car that cannot sustain whatever it is they're doing to the roads in the West End. It's like Whitney, Farmington, there's a really interesting project happening, and when they're, I don't know, repaving it, they're not doing a good job, and it's causing traffic issues, it's causing potential damage to my vehicle, it can cause accidents trying to avoid those potholes. So I'm curious, what funding is in place to make sure the roads are paved better after there's any kind of construction as such? And I don't know if that ties back to the MDC and the money they're getting, but they need to do a better job. One time, there was literally a hole sitting in the intersection at Fern and Whitney, and I was afraid that I was going to hit it with my tire and break an axle. So that's my second concerning question. In thinking about the lowering of enrollment of students and the increased amount of money that's going to be provided per pupil, my question was wondering, how's that extra money going to be spent per pupil? Is it for books? Is it for supplies? Is it for software? Is it for new programs? Is it, how are we allocating this funding? And one suggestion might be, and I don't know enough, again, you know, I haven't read the entire proposal, so I'm going to say I don't know what I don't know, but what I'm wondering is if any of that extra money can be used to support the parents and families, all the children attending the schools, because I know that parent and family involvement is critical to student success, and so I'm wondering if some of those funds could be used for that support network. And then, because I live in the West End and am subject to the porch pirates who love to steal things, including my $400 catalytic converter on my car, I'm wondering what money is going to be allocated to assist with public safety in that area? And I'm not for overpolicing our communities. I'm not for anything that's going to harm our, you know, brothers and sisters of color who may feel oppressed by the police, but at the same time, I feel like I should be able to park on my street without going out and fearing that my car is going to be stolen or my tires or some important piece to my car is going to be missing when I get up in the morning. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask these questions. I'll be following up with the email for you all, and again, thanks for having this hearing tonight.
Thank you for your comments. And that concludes our public hearing. I want to thank everyone who came out today and members who watched us over the social platforms. Please join us next week as we start our budget hearings with the various departments. I want to thank everyone again, and have a good night. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.